Just take a moment of silence for anybody we lost. Thank you. Clerk Golick-Rocha.
Alexander. Spitali.
Here.
Vines.
Here.
Kalwinski.
Here.
Salinas.
Here.
Tyler.
President.
Emerson.
Here.
Rakels.
Here.
Warple.
Here. Let the record show, eight in attendance, one absent. Mayor's address. Mr. Miller.
Good evening, Council. Mayor sends his greetings, but I'll be delivering the address today. Some updates. Public Works did vote and approve their contract 63 to 4. So that was the last contract of this negotiating season. We won't have to do those again for another four years. So, good news there. There was a Times article in the paper today about the downtown quantum corridor. That is in the old dialysis meeting building where Purdue is going into. We are having conversations with them, but it's also going to be a business incubator for all sorts of types of businesses. They're even looking at having some studios in there for artists and be able, for small businesses, to film commercials and the like. And the big part is the quantum corridor. Again, if you're not familiar with quantum computing in a nutshell, it allows you to take a whole bunch of data at a single time and process it much faster than a traditional computer, which does just one thing at a time really fast. Councilman Warple and I went down to Chattanooga. We got to see a presentation of this back in November of how they're doing it down there. But this corridor will have a high-speed link between Chicago through Hammond down to Purdue Lafayette. And really, it's going to be used as a location for researchers. So you're saying, well, how does that benefit Hammond? We're going to have research scientists having long-term stays in downtown where they're going to be going to work each day at this Purdue location to utilize quantum computing. And there's really very few places in the country where they can do that. And they're going to have it here in Hammond. There was also a Times article on Sunday about the homicide rate in Lake County going down. I just want to inform the council and publicly state that they overstated the Hammond homicide rate by 30%. They will be issuing a correction on that. We do a lot of things to keep that number as low as possible. And we investigated the discrepancy between the coroner's office and our data today. We found out something. I'll give you a real example. There was a person who was shot in a neighboring community all the way back in 2010, but they passed away this year. And when the coroner came to determine the cause of death, they attributed it in part to a gunshot that happened 14 years ago. But since they were now living in Hammond, they attributed that as a homicide in Hammond. There was also a couple other instances where someone was shot in Chicago. Multiple years passed, and they came and they moved to Hammond, and again, they passed away, and that was attributed to a death in Hammond. So those are the kind of things we've discovered today. Times is going to post a correction. An update. Mayor mentioned it on Mayor's Night Out about the data center deal up in the First District. Just want to mention that we continue to move forward. I know there's been some questions posed to this board of, hey, you did a first reading of this. When is it going to come in front of the council again? We're just making sure this thing is legitimate. And the biggest thing is the power, as Mayor mentioned at Mayor's Night Out. We're going to make sure the deal with NIPSCO is solid, and then it will be brought forth again to the council for consideration. But that's why it's not there again tonight. There's no conspiracy. We just want to make sure before we ask you to approve something that it's not vaporware and it's going to go away. We had our MLK celebration last week. We had a really good attendance there. I want to thank Juana Miller, who's in the audience, for her team for planning all that. Juana let me know today, and I think we should give a round of applause, that she just celebrated her 30 years with the city of Hammond. Here's the 30 more. Right, Juana?
No.
Just kidding. We did post, as promised, we did post the letter to BP that Mayor had sent. They have been in touch with the administration, and we will be having a meeting upcoming to make sure that if there are any types of leaks in the future, that we have the technical data we need in a much quicker form, and that even potentially that we have the kits out in the field where we can determine very quickly what is in the atmosphere if there is another BP leak. So we are moving forward with that, and we will keep you posted on that. I had a meeting with Councilman Salinas over at the Hammond Sanitary District to explore some of the odors coming from HSD. And I am pleased to say that we're working on a plan, and we've hired a chemist and as an expert to kind of help us with a solution to limit the odors in especially the Second District. I did get to tour the new water department. If you're not familiar or for the audience, Water Department is moving downtown into the old People's Bank Building. It's taking a little longer than we expected, so the new update is May is when we expect to open the downtown Water Department. But work is coming along, and it's looking good. We had a meeting, too, about the Sportsplex expansion. That should begin principal construction in March. So they're trying to finish up a couple leagues and get them. I know my kid plays in it, and they're squashing all the games together so we can get the construction started in March. Couple upcoming events, and then I'll take my seat. Next Thursday, we have our Black History Celebration. That is February 6 at 10:00 a.m. Location this year is the Civic Center, not the Sportsplex, but the Civic Center. Like to invite everyone in the community out for that. Again, Black History Celebration, February 6, 10:00 a.m. We do have our upcoming 219 Day, which is not on February 19, but it is on Saturday, February 22 from 6 to 11 at the Civic Center. The theme is Viva La Region, so it's a Vegas theme applied to the region. Again, 219 Day is on Saturday, the 22 at the Civic Center. And my last announcement is in February as well. We will have a pro pickleball tournament at the Gene Shepherd from February 21 through the 23, $20,000 in prize money. That's in partnership with 219 Pickleball, but that's our first, like, big hosting a professional event where there's actual prize money at the Gene. So that's February 21 through the 23. I know some people are going to be mentioning it. I have no updates on the video. There'll probably be some groans about that, but I have nothing to update about last council's meeting and the video. So, all right, that's my update. Any questions?
It's not a question. It's a comment on something you said when we went to learn about quantum computing.
Yes.
I asked the question on what exactly is quantum computing compared to computing? And about halfway through the answer, I thought I would have learned more standing out in a 40-degree cold rain because I had no clue as far as being computer illiterate. But it's the new trend in the next 20 years. Is that correct?
Yeah. What it seeks to do is, like, take the weather as a perfect example. Like, rather than just taking like weather data from maybe 10 different locations, it could take radio data from a million locations at the same time and process all of that and give a much more reliable. Same thing with like DNA-type things that used to take days where it's calculating all this stuff to do DNA research. It could be done in a matter of minutes. So something massively parallel computing that just really took a really long time with traditional computers. You know, traditional computers like a light switch. It goes on and off. It just does that super fast. This is taking all that information in at one time.
And it's just from what we saw. It's kind of like the city of Chattanooga partnered with the University of Tennessee. And it's a very successful lab they have there, and that's kind of what we're hoping for here, correct?
Yeah. It is exactly what we're hoping for here. Purdue's been a great partner to the city for a long time. But I think it helped substantiate, again, part of the downtown vision, right, is why are people going to go down there? Well, this is going to be one of the reasons why. They're going to eat in our restaurants. They're going to stay in our locations and do their research work for months at a time. They're not going to just be there for a weekend. It's going to be months at a time.
Thank you. Anybody else got anything for us? Scott?
All right. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Item number four, approval of amendments.
Mr. President.
Councilman Salinas.
I make a motion that we approve the amendments from the January 13, 2025 meeting and place them on file.
Second.
Motion's been made by Councilman Salinas, seconded by Councilperson Emerson. Is there any discussion? Is there any discussion? Is there any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the ayes have it. Item number five, approval of claims.
Mr. President.
Councilwoman Vines.
I move for approval of claims beginning with claims stated January 9, 2025, and ending with claims stated January 22, 2025. Claim number 362 through claim number 875 inclusive in the amount of $9,218,354.72. I so move.
Second.
Motion's been made by Councilwoman Vines, seconded by Councilman Spitali. Is there any discussion?
Mr. President.
Councilman Koinski.
Thank you. I'd like to amend in claim number 876, which is $300 to the Whiting-Robertsdale Historical Society.
Second.
Motion's been made to amend the claims by Councilman Koinski, seconded by Councilman Spitali. Is there any discussion? Is there any discussion? Is there any discussion? Before we get to the vote, the chair recognizes that Councilwoman Alexander is available on Zoom now, so we'll take a vote on the amendment.
Alexander.
Yes.
Spitali.
Yes.
Vines.
Yes.
Kalwinski.
Yes.
Salinas.
Yes.
Tyler.
Yes.
Emerson.
Yes.
Rakels.
Yes.
Warple.
Yes. The motion carries nine in favor, zero opposed. Now, we'll entertain a motion to... Pardon me?
Claims as amended.
Yeah, the claims as amended. Take a motion that passed. The claim's as amended.
I so move.
Second.
Motion's been made by Councilwoman Vines, seconded by Councilman Rakels. Is there any discussion? Is there any discussion? Is there any discussion? Clerk Golick-Rocha.
Alexander.
Yes.
Spitali.
Yes.
Vines.
Yes.
Kalwinski.
Yes.
Salinas.
Yes.
Tyler.
Yes.
Emerson.
Yes.
Rakels.
Yes.
Warple.
Yes. The record show nine in favor, zero opposed. Item number six, public hearings. There are none. Item number seven, communications. Communications. Does anybody have any communications? Hearing none, communications are now closed. Item number eight, committee reports.
Mr. President.
Councilwoman Vines.
Yes. I would like to announce the upcoming Community and Crime Watch meetings. Community Watch at Mount Zion Pleasant View Plaza will be Wednesday, February 12, 1:00 p.m. Edison Community Watch will meet Wednesday, February 5, 6:30 p.m. at Edison School. Harrison Park Crime Watch will meet Tuesday, February 4, 6:00 p.m. at the VFW on Holman Avenue across from Harrison Park. Hessville Crime Watch, excuse me, will meet Thursday, February 20, 6:00 p.m. at the HC3 Community Center. Irving Community Watch will meet Tuesday, February 11, 9:30 a.m. at Irving School. Whiting-Robertsdale Crime Watch will meet Thursday, February 13, 6:30 p.m. at Calumet College. South Holman Avenue Neighborhood Watch will meet sometime in April, so keep posted for that date. That will be announced soon. Every meeting, I always say, "Community is not just about me. It's about us." And I implore all of our residents, if you see... Excuse me. If you see anything going on in your neighborhood, please call 911. The police would much rather get a call about something that turns out to be nothing than something that they did not receive a call about that turns out to be something. So please, call 911 if you see something. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Does anybody else?
Yes, Mr. President.
Councilman Salinas.
I have a report from our Capital Improvement Board. We met last week on January 21, and we approved four allocations of funding. The first allocation was for the relocation of the siren in Robertsdale to the new fire station that's nearing completion in the amount of $9,700. The second allocation was a 165th and State Line improvements that was awarded to the Gary construction in the amount of $252,500. This deals with the intersection split between the Third and the Fourth District. It includes improvements in warnings and addition of rumble strips. The third allocation was a Clark Field Storm Sewer redesign awarded to Nice Engineering in the amount of $17,700. This was a storm sewer and sewer pipe relocation from a private parkway back to the easement as it initially should have been. The fourth and final allocation is to the downtown Hammond kiss-and-ride design that deals with our train station to the Lockmeyer Group in the amount of $480,250. That concludes the update from the Capital Improvement Board.
Thank you. Does anybody else have anything on the committee reports? Councilman Koinski.
Mr. President, thank you. Just a question. You mentioned rumble strips.
Yes.
Where will they go? And is that a common practice in the city? Do we have other rumble strip areas? Scott, do you know? I'm excited to hear about this.
No, I'm unaware of any other rumble strips. Was there discussion at the meeting?
There was. That was included in some of the improvements in the notes that I took down.
What was the location again?
The location was 165th and State Line.
Okay. Councilmen, I believe, and correct me if I'm wrong, those are rumble strips on the shoulder when you start to approach the cement blocks that are there? It's my understanding. Some people have been running into them, not knowing that that turn is there, and they, as an, you know, an action to further warn them that they're about to hit a wall. I think that's, I could be wrong, but I believe that's where the rumble strip was explained, the rumble strips are going. It's in the shoulder, correct?
Yes.
Thank you.
That would make a lot of sense. Literally, this past weekend, we had somebody drive up that corner by State Line and 165th into a person's house, drive right into their house. So hopefully, this would help prohibit that. Thanks.
Any further questions on the committee report? Any further? Anybody else got any committee reports?
Mr. President.
Councilman Koinski.
Wanted to make mention that tomorrow, Tuesday, the Palos del Carmen Neighborhood Association will hold a meeting at the Hammond Mohawks at 141st and Calumet Avenue. There'll be some updates regarding the BP event as well as 3141st and the doings and goings on over there. I would encourage all the at-larges to attend if they can because this is a, these issues are pretty big in the district, and I think they're looking for all of us to do something about some of these issues. Thank you.
What time is that meeting?
6:30.
Thank you. Does anybody else got anything on the committee reports? Any more committee reports? Hearing none, committee reports are closed. Item number nine, ordinance third and final reading. Third reading and final passage, there are none. Item number 10, introduction of ordinances.
Item A, ordinance number 25-01, sponsored by Councilman Spitali, and ordinance appropriating the proceeds of the annual action plan and dealing with other matters pertaining to the expenditure of planned proceeds for the program year 2025.
Mr. President.
Councilman Spitali.
For first and second reading, the council as a whole have a meeting set for February 10, 2025, at 5:15.
Second.
And also a public hearing for the same date, February 10, 2025.
Second.
Motion's been made by Councilman Spitali, seconded by Councilman Emerson. Is there any discussion?
Discussion, please. Just because the title of the ordinance doesn't indicate what it is. This is our annual approval for our federal funding, including housing, our emergency solutions grant, and our CDGB, our Community Development Block grant funds. But this is required every year so we can be on pace with the services we offer through federal funding.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Any further discussion? Any further discussion? Clerk Golick-Rocha.
Alexander.
Yes.
Spitali.
Yes.
Vines.
Yes.
Kalwinski.
Yes.
Salinas.
Yes.
Tyler.
Yes.
Emerson.
Yes.
Rakels.
Yes.
Warple.
Yes. Let the record show, nine in favor, zero opposed.
President Warple, that concludes the introduction of ordinances.
Thank you, Clerk Golick. Item number 11, resolutions.
Item A, Resolution 25R-01, sponsored by Councilman Spitali. A resolution of the City Council of the City of Hammond authorizing the filing of the annual action plan application and designating signatories for payment voucher on letters of credit for the 2025 annual action plan programs.
President.
Councilman Spitali.
Final passage of 25R01.
Second.
Motion's been made by Councilman Spitali, seconded by Councilman Rakels. Is there any discussion?
President.
Councilman Spitali.
Resolution is authorization to file CDBG, home, ESG applications pertaining to the annual action plan. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any further discussion? Is there any further discussion? Any further discussion? Clerk Golick-Rocha.
Alexander.
Yes.
Spitali.
Yes.
Vines.
Yes.
Kalwinski.
Yes.
Salinas.
Yes.
Tyler.
Yes.
Emerson.
Yes.
Rakels.
Yes.
Warple.
Yes. Let the record show, nine in favor, zero opposed.
President Warple, that concludes the reading of the resolutions.
Item number 12, New and Unfinished Business.
Mr. President.
Councilwoman Vines.
Yes. I move to reappoint Angelo O'Heda to the HVAC Contractors Board. This would be his third, second, two-year term. I so move.
Is there a second?
Second.
The motion's been made to reappoint to the HVAC Board Angelo O'Heda. Is there any discussion? Is there any discussion? Is there any discussion? Hearing none. Clerk Golick-Rocha on the motion.
Alexander. Spitali.
Yes.
Vines.
Sorry, yes.
Was that a yes?
Yes, it was.
Yes.
Thank you. Vines.
Yes.
Kalwinski.
Yes.
Salinas.
Yes.
Tyler.
Yes.
Emerson.
Yes.
Rakels.
Yes.
Warple.
Yes. Let the record show, the motion carries nine in favor, zero opposed. Does anybody got anything? Anybody else got anything on the new and unfinished business? Anything on the new and unfinished business? Hearing no more new and unfinished business. Item, new and unfinished business is closed. Item number 13, public expression. I remind the public that it's three minutes to say what you want to say, and we'll start with Perry Stabler.
Good evening, everybody. Nice to see you. I came all the way from Wisconsin from my cabin. I'm on 47 acres. My cabin's about 30 feet from the Wisconsin River. It's a beautiful place. Some people know it as a redneck Riviera. It's called on WJOB. But the place is so beautiful. It's as beautiful as the Hessfeld Dunes, as everybody calls it. And Bob Golick knows my travels through life. I'm not just coming up here mouthing off. He was a dirt bike rider in 1975 who helped save Gibson Woods and took the markers, the old street markers, and put in 128 street markers to help save Gibson Woods. I've got a buck that comes in my house. I can't show you because I don't have enough time. So... And then we also saved nine more acres with the help of Bob Golick in 1999. So I've been at this gig for over 50 years. I want to talk about death. I want to talk about McDermott is not your God. Because I'm pretty close to death myself. And what I want to say, if I have a chance, if any of you are in hospice, I'm going to come visit you. And I'm going to say, look what you did to them little animals that you pushed out of the woods. I want to be there. I want to be there for you while you're dying. Just remember that. If I hear on WJOB, because I have my own radio show, I'm on with Tom Dabberton. We had the MX Mad Mad Christmas Show. I hope you all enjoyed it. Very funny. All right, here's a good friend of mine, Scott Rakels. You should remember, when everybody leaves and you're on that airbed and you're by yourself, what you did to them animals. Then the last visit is going to be from MX, and I'm going to tell you, McDermott wasn't your God. Take care.
Thank you. Next speaker. Mr. Rosick. Hang on, I screwed the timer. Go ahead and speak, but I screwed the timer up.
Greetings, Council.
Hit it.
Last meeting, 76 people, including 22 brave speakers, excuse me, were silenced by Tom McDermott Jr. and the mayor of Hammond, Indiana. The mayor refused to release the video footage of their testimony. It was one of the biggest displays of community participation in the city's history. How can the council tolerate this? Now, the legislative branch is just an extension of the executive, but the executive owns you. It's a horrible moment for the Hammond Common Council and a sad state of affairs for the city of Hammond. We deserve to have that footage posted. I would love to like, I would love to talk about the issues concerning Governor's Bridge, but I feel it is necessary to address the mayor's actions and his threats, intimidation, and violence, and violation of our freedom of speech. These tactics are used by people who have no valid arguments. Our mayor is curtailing our freedom of speech and establishing an authoritarian government right here in Indiana. I don't know what's worse, losing our last bit of natural habitat to a boondoggle or our dramatic slide into autocratic government. We have all the ingredients: censorship, a strong man, loyal yes-men, and a council that is either passive or petrified. At Mayor's Night Out, his crew showered... At Mayor's Night Out, his crew showered us with a choreographed display of mendacity while blocking every one of us from speaking. Every one of us wasn't allowed to speak. This was another disgusting display to prevent free speech. On the mayor's podcast, he said that he wants to beat the crap out of us. People were afraid to come to this meeting because of his threats. I just hope his F-bomb-laden show has a childproof filter on it. I wouldn't want any kids hearing that garbage. He also said he hopes that a bullet hits us. True story, right on his podcast, advocating violence, again. Then he claimed that we were cursing, telling lies, and terrorizing him. Please. Odd, since no one was allowed to speak, he's being a bully that plays the role of a victim. Put the bridge on Grand Avenue as recommended by experts and the FRA. It'll save us $14 million, and it'll save the Briar East Woods.
Thank you, Ken. Andrea Joe. Andrea Joe, and I'm sorry, I...
Centers. Good evening, everybody. My name's Andrea Centers. Do I need to give you my address? Or just go? Do you need my address, or it's on the...
You got it wrote down here, that's good.
Okay, good. Well, I too was actually very disturbed watching that podcast, listening to Mayor McDermott swearing like he was, and he was going to have that F-ing bridge no matter what anybody said or did. And that is not really the mayor that I voted for or wanted to... I mean, I used to really like him, but when he's talking about, you know, hoping that we get shot before he gets shot, you know, the bullet hits us but not him, it's like, I don't know where that's even coming from. This is supposed to be a peaceful demonstration, and our ecosystem with the trees that are there, they provide... One tree provides enough oxygen for three people. It is also a natural water absorbent for the town. And displacing all of these animals and leveling that, it just doesn't make any sense. You know, I'm standing here every meeting, wondering, why is this even a question? 42 acres of trees that are 1,400 years old, and the sand and everything. We do the three cleanups a year on our own. Earth Day and two other days at our choice. And to just let him have his way because he's stomping his feet and acting like a child is ridiculous. I think that, you know, we should be able to come to a meeting of the mind. I've never seen a grown-up act so ungrown-up as he did in that podcast, and that really hurt my feelings, that somebody would want to come after us and shoot us because we're trying to save the dunes and the animals that are in it. Where will they go? You know, are we going to end up shooting them too? Because they're going to be in our yards, and they're going to be eating all of our vegetables that we're planting? And, I mean, I walk into those dunes and immediately I feel a sense of calm and walking through there with my dogs. And as I said multiple times, I am disabled, so it's really important for me to have a place to go where I can feel like I can commune with nature, just like my, you know, with my dog, and bring my kids there and make it a learning center for children and our grandchildren to come, like what they did at Sandridge Nature Center, which I've mentioned a few times. And that's really all I have. Thank you for hearing me out.
And the next speaker is Anne Sedlasik. I'm sorry if I didn't get that right.
Good evening. Anne Sedlasik, 52 Locust Street. I express my support for the preservation of the entire 32 acres of Briar East Woods. I ask City Council to say no to the Governor's Parkway project. I've been part of Hessville Dune Dusters for two and a half years. And Hessville has a train problem. This is a 100-year-old problem. The neighborhood is gridlocked by trains, but even worse, kids climb over and crawl under stalled trains walking to schools on Grand Avenue. We need a train solution. That solution must be built on Grand Avenue at the crossing where all the incidents of children climbing over trains were recorded and where a pedestrian fatality occurred. The public must be well aware that Governor's Parkway would be built a one-mile walk from that crossing at Grand Avenue. No child or adult is going to use it. If this bridge is built, kids will continue to climb the trains on Grand as usual. Only the city will have spent $14 million to build a bridge one mile to the west. Since that is the case, they have now tacked on the $7 million pedestrian bridge on Grand. One year ago, I spoke to Tina Blumenberg from the Federal Railroad Administration. She is an acrid crossing specialist with the FRA and the direct contact for the Governor's Parkway project. She told me that the FRA recommended to the City of Hammond an overpass on Grand Avenue to fix the train problem, but the mayor continued to push Governor's Parkway, even acknowledging that it wouldn't totally solve the problem and a solution on Grand was needed. The FRA is in agreement with the Hessville Dune Dusters that a bridge or underpass on Grand is the best solution to the train problem in Hessville. Now that the $7 million supplemental ped bridge on Grand is part of Governor's Parkway, the total is upwards of $21 million. The mayor likes to say he got the state and federal government to pay for it, but let's not forget that the Hammond taxpayer is responsible for roughly 20% or $4,200,000 of that price tag. An overpass on Grand was estimated at $8 million, less than half the cost. An underpass would be even better. Either would solve the train problem in Hessville directly at the problem crossing on Grand. This all makes a lot of sense, so why did the city push against it? Anyone we speak to for five minutes who's not a city employee understands that the only reason this project could possibly move forward is because it has the potential to pad someone's pockets. The mayor, his cronies, or whoever will profit from the eventual 68 residential lots and two commercial sites along the new road through Briar East Woods, known as Governor's Parkway. Reckless spending of taxpayer dollars for the profit of government officials, putting children's safety at the bottom of the list, and thoughtlessly bulldozing a priceless ancient dune woodland that provides numerous environmental and economic benefits to your city. This will be your legacy as a council, as a city, as a mayor, and we will continue sharing the truth with the public until everyone understands that, and we will continue fighting to fix the train problem the right way.
Next speaker is Sam Carpenter.
Sam Carpenter, 8942 Wayman Avenue. Going to tell a little story, I promise it'll get to a point. This last week, I was in, visiting some family out in Oro Valley in Arizona, and I was at Catalina State Park, which is a very beautiful state park in Arizona, right outside Tucson in Oro Valley. And right at the beginning of a trailhead, they have a little plaque that talks about how Catalina State Park came to be. And the way that it came to be was there's three people who were concerned because the state was selling the land to some private investors, and they were going to turn it into a bunch of homes and turn it into a shopping center. However, they know how valuable wildlife is and how valuable it is to keep natural spaces and how healthy it is for us, and they fought against it, and they ended up winning. And it was, got me to think about this, and I was just thinking, you know, no matter what decision you make, whether you keep these woods, which I'm in favor for, or you build something, you guys are going to be remembered in history, and it's whether you guys want to be remembered on the right side of history or the wrong side of history. Because I promise, people will remember your names, they'll remember what you did, they'll remember whether you just stood there and let these woods get destroyed, let all these animals be murdered and displaced, or they'll understand that you guys fought for this, which I think you should. And also, I think it's very disturbing to hear the comments the mayor's making on a podcast. I think that time is probably better spent, you know, trying to figure out how to help the community instead of throwing a temper tantrum on the podcast. And it's... It's very disturbing to hear some potential threats be made by him, and it just kind of reminds me of something a fascist would say, and I think you guys should stand up to that. And I'm very scared to even come out here and talk about it. He thinks, you know, he's the one that should be afraid, but it's us because he's throwing out these threats, saying we're terrorizing when all we're doing is speaking when we're told to be spoken to. And, you know, you guys are censoring the video from the last town council and not letting people speak on Mayor's Night Out, and I just, I don't think that's right. And I think we should fight to keep these woods. Thank you.
I screwed up the timer again.
Sometimes you can flop down and stop a meeting, you know? That can happen. Anthony Diaz, Hammond, Indiana, 60 years. Let me tell you, Harrison Park, I've been cleaning that myself, the lagoon. Ran a dumpster, me and a buddy, two people. I feel like I was, I feel like I was on an island by myself. Of course, that island doesn't have any water. You killed all the animals. There's no frogs, turtles, fish that's in there like we used to have when we were a kid. I felt like I was on an island until I met these people, the Green Space. I really commend them for speaking the truth. I mean, constantly here. I've talked about the underpass, and it should be an underpass. You know, it's economical, it's not $21 million, but yet we're talking about a sportsplex. We're going to continue to expand on something that's not working. It's not working, man. It's not working. I didn't ask for that. I didn't ask for a sportsplex, a Gene Shepherd Center, any of this other stuff, but yet my taxes went up $500 and my park looks like crap. Okay? And our fields are gone, and we're building Oakford Clark Field. This man destroyed the school seat of Hammond, and yet he's promoted to be a chief of staff. And you guys are okay with that, huh? Rubber stamp, rubber stamp. Yeah, you're okay with that, too. Yeah, I know this guy. And I've been a good boy today. I see you got the cops by me, so that's good. What's happening in this city is just atrocious. Where's the man today? Where is the mayor? I mean, these people want to talk to him. Last time he made comments here, he left at the door for booze, and, you know, we gave him, we only gave him a hard time. We're not going to kill him, shoot him in the head. He talks about all this? This is what he talks about on his podcast? I don't listen to podcasts. I ain't got time for all that. But is this what he's talking about? Killing us? He said he's going to flood this with yellow shirts. I don't know. I don't see any yellow shirts. I see no support. And you guys keep on voting for the guy. Remember, these people work for us. We pay their salaries. We pay the mayor's salary. Everything we do for this city, we love it. I've been here 60 years, like I said. And I'm going to keep on fighting. Every day, I'm going to bring my camera, because you guys did it to us last time. Did it to us last time, you cut the camera because you were flopping. We got a flopper here. It's probably paid from the city to do something like this. Man's been, too many accidents. But what can we say? This is how the city is, this is how politics is. Again, rubber stamp. You guys got to examine yourself and see what kind of changes you're going to make for these people. We didn't ask for any of this stuff. We didn't ask for any of these sportsplexes, anything else. I didn't ask for it. My taxes went up $500, and I have no improvement in my park, at all. It's terrible. And I live by that car accident in front of my house. Glass splatter all over. Who's picking that up? Me. Constantly, cleaning up after the city on my dime. It's enough.
Good evening, councilmen. I would like to say a few words to all of you. If you are supporting that project that is going to destroy the Briar East Woods and our community in the belief that you are not going to, that that project is not going to affect you because you work for the city and you are protecting your job and position and/or because you are... Because you don't live in Hessville? Think twice. We all are going to be affected for that bad decision that is not going to solve the problems in our community and that is not going to benefit anyone but the mayor and a few others in his team work. Councilmen, it is hard to believe that you are supporting that project that is going to destroy our beautiful old trees, the community where you grew up, the community where you live, the community where your family lives, the community of the people who voted for you, who trust you and have faith in you, and now you are turning your back to them. Shame on you. We are very disappointed. We are very disappointed that you are not backing out. Your actions are absolutely unacceptable. Shame on you. We expected a better representation from you. I am personally thoroughly disappointed in you. If the dune ends being destroyed, politicians compromising with the status quo will be paying a high price in the next elections. Borders will remember their lack of actions, apathy, apathy, and your stupidity.
Next up is Negan Goodrich.
Hello. I'm Dr. Negan Hosseini Goodrich, and I live at 8029 Duluth Street in Highland. Starting with my home address makes me think about another layer of the word "home." My first home is in a country in the Middle East. Once upon a time, not too long ago, that place was filled with trees, prairies, and green scenery everywhere, with thousands of trees, plants, and animal species peacefully coexisting. But it didn't take long for the saws and bulldozers to roar dreadfully and cut down tree after tree. Why? Because those lands were deemed wastelands while they could make more money and more facilities for us. One day, we woke up just to notice that we were breathing dust, only dust. All the woods were gone, and huge buildings stared at us like monsters, offering no solutions for our suffocating lungs. Hopeless of making any change, I migrated to the United States 15 years ago to breathe freely, to politically, environmentally, and humanly breathe freely. With that story in my background, I was surprised to see that some Americans have taken this nature, this free beauty, this free healer for granted. Some of us Americans don't know what it means to have to drive for hours to find a small forest only to breathe fresh air. I have this experience in my life. The woods and green nature around us are kind healers. They heal us from the increasing pressures of this modern life. Simply by standing there, they generously give us comfort, solitude, and natural medicine. I want to invite you to join us in loving Briar East Woods. Please join us and love that place and help us save it. After all, you don't want my first home destiny to happen to our home now here. Thank you so much.
Next up, Lizette Montanaz.
Good evening, City Council. Lizette Montanaz, First District. I attended Mayor's Night Out last week, and I also attended the January 13th City Council meeting that took place here. And there were important topics like BP leaks and environmental issues, Governor's Bridge. I also tuned into Left of Center podcast where remarks were made. And rather than to make a rebuttal on the insulting remarks that were made about some of the people that are sitting in this room today, I want to redirect the focus back on the safety issues that they were very much focused on, but some of them very disregarded in my district, First District, on Mayor's Night Out. So, the children jumping over the trains. I don't believe that the dispute about the bridge is the issue happening here. I believe a lot of people do, in fact, believe that there is a bridge needed. It is the design of the bridge that is being disputed here. The design of the bridge is not safe and is not helping our children. We have a former superintendent of the school city of Hammond sitting right here to my right, who is now the chief of staff. It is those children that walk to and from school that are jumping those trains, he's very much aware of that, as he's aware of the transportation cuts that have been made that are currently being remedied thanks to a few great elected officials this year. And he's also aware that our city does not have public transportation for our children. The remedy is not pedestrian bridge. The children will not be walking two miles away at the cost of our taxpayers, not just Hessville, all Hammond. They will be jumping the bridge. So I believe the resolution truly here needs to be, and I'm going to look at each and every one of you in the eye to please put the children first, because that is a safety issue as well. I'll be back with this one.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Next up is Ken Davidson. Is Ken Davidson here? I don't see him in the crowd. No Ken Davidson? Okay. Next up is TJ. I'm gonna give it a shot. Garrettting?
Garrettting? Nice.
It's been a while since I read people's names on mail.
I know, hey, you're doing good, man. Okay, how's it going, councilman? I, I hope you were enjoying the Sea of Green. And Councilwoman Vanez, I don't know if it was a coincidence or on purpose, but it looks really good on you as well. But I wanted to talk a little bit about what you guys know about this project, you know? Because I know certainly, you know, the topic of the day is, you know, withholding information, withholding free speech. Sorry, I have paint on my hands from work. I came straight from work, I realized that. Were you guys filled in about this project? So let me ask you first, did you know that there was seven alternate routes for this bridge design, not going through the woods, that were proposed to Hammond? Did you know that? It was from NDOT and CMT Engineering Firm. And one of those routes was indeed an overpass on Grand Avenue. And, so I'm looking at the hearing presentation from the NDOT public hearing that I think most of you attended two years ago. It says Governor's Parkway, $11.6 million, that's since gone up to $15 million. And it says Grand Avenue overpass, $8.4 million. Okay? Did you guys know that before the city administration signed the, signed the book, yes, we're going with Governor's Parkway? Did they tell you that? I don't know. I wanted next to, to talk about what was written on the grant application for this, because the mayor has said many times, many times, many times, no housing, no housing, no housing. This is to get over the trains, is to get these kids over the trains, right? Well, this, I'm reading from the TRACs grant application dated August 29th, 2018. In summary, the project, Governor's Parkway, seeks to develop approximately 34 acres of undeveloped property in Hammond for the purpose of residential 30 acres and some limited commercial four acres development, with a projected increase in assessed valuation of new development at $10.4 million and an increase in the tax levy by $251,000 per year. Did you guys know about this? It's from 2018. From 2018. And I don't know if you guys know about this. I mean, because I know, I know that things, you know, might happen behind closed doors here, or you might be the last to know at some, at some points. If you did know about it, I hope you would have spoken up. Oh, man, I had one more. Oh, man. Well, I wanted to ask you real quick, there's a pedestrian overpass that was just funded on Grand Avenue to get these kids over the trains, God bless.
Thank you.
How many houses is it taking? How many houses is it taking? Have they told you?
Next up, Nathan Reader.
You know, I wasn't going to speak on this because I live in Widmore, but after the last council meeting, I thought I'd come by, and I've titled this "Rule by Mob: Elections Be Damned." The first time I noticed we were being ruled by mob and not the representatives we elected was back in 2021 after my friend and fellow Realtor from East Chicago, Nick Smith, worked for a year to bring a housing development of eight $250,000 townhomes to Robertsdale, only to have the rug pulled out from under his client's feet as a mob showed up in protest and killed the deal. At the time, I hadn't thought much of it, because on the surface, it seemed the neighbors might have been just as surprised as I that a project like that might even be proposed in our Rust Belt city after finally crawling out of the depths of the Great Recession. That eliminated $2 million from our total assessed value, chopping about $50,000 in our annual tax revenue. The second time was a year later, 2022, at the Clark High School football redevelopment meeting. As I drove to that meeting, I was excited to hear what plans the mayor might have put together to develop that 15-acre city-owned lot across the street from our multimillion-dollar Wolf Lake Park. We could add 1,000 housing units at that site and really bring us into the 21st century, I thought, as I passed the Los Marsh Golf Course and headed to the meeting. Instead, when I arrived, I found a room of 70-year-old white homeowners who demanded the mayor eliminate any plan that involves those people who might buy a $250,000 townhome. All we want is those people who buy $400,000, $500,000 single-family homes, mayor, and they won. So today, we might add maybe 15 or 20 million in new assessed value at that site that could have generated about 200 million in new assessed value, tax at 2%, providing enough funding at just that one site to fully fund College Bound for the next 10 years. Instead, we'll be lucky to generate more than $150,000 in tax revenue in a very hard-to-come-by 15-acre city-owned lot across from a beautiful park. Thousands of people have bought homes between, below $150,000 every year from 1998 to 2018 in cities and towns outside of our urban core of Hammond, Whiting, East Chicago, and Gary. Today, just 200 homes are sold in places like Highland, Munster, Griffith, Cedar Lake, Lowell, all the way up to Portage and Valparaiso. Where do you think those thousands of buyers went? Everyone who used to buy $150,000 homes in Munster, Highland, and Griffith hundreds a year now are forced to our city, and they're displacing the hundreds of people every year from 1998 to 2018 who used to buy homes for $90,000 in our city. Now those people who used to move to our city are moving to Gary and displacing those people. So the best way to save this forest is to build abundant housing everywhere, not just our city, so our city doesn't have to chop up sites like Briar East Woods just to build homes, and communities that surround us simply won't build. I've been following this housing crisis, the prevalence of NIMBY neighbors to show up in protest with "rule of mob," any housing proposed in our Rust Belt cities and towns from Aurora to Zionsville, and I'm sick of it! I got the data here for you, if you want it. I wrote this speech out, there's two more paragraphs, read it. Call me, let's meet and talk about this housing crisis that everybody wants to protest!
Next up, Langston Jasper. Langston Jasper.
Hi, everyone. First, I'd like to thank Mr. Barry Tyler for inviting me here and allowing me to speak. My name is Langston Jasper. I'm born and raised in Hammond, Indiana. I'm a senior in high school, and I plan on attending Purdue University for aerospace engineering and aviation. The last time I was here, I had a government assignment, and I had the pleasure of watching you all engage in meaningful discourse, political participation, and genuinely trying to make the city better. I was also here with my friend Cameron Walker, and when the meeting was over, he came right here and he spoke confidently. I always tell him the way he was talking, it was like he was a future councilman. But me, on the other hand, I didn't get up, and I didn't say anything. I was too fearful of what could happen. Ever since then, I've thought about that moment, and I realize there's no place in this world for fear, especially right now. I wanted to use this opportunity to inspire others to never act to fail on their opportunities. I am here to say, when you act, you will be rewarded. Take me, for example. I'm just a young man that has been rewarded for my actions of academic success, club and sport participation, volunteering, and work. And I am greatly honored to be recognized and significantly motivated to continue persevering through any obstacle I face. So don't be afraid to speak, act, or make your presence known. Trust me, the world will thank you when you do. Thank you, and have a great day.
Next up. Next up, Carlotta Blake King. Carlotta Blake King, is she here? And finally, Councilman, former Councilman Anthony Higgs. Let me catch up.
Good evening. First of all, let me say thank you to Councilman Warful for sending your regards in terms of my past illness here at the council meeting. It can be quite overwhelming hearing all the concerns of people and fighting for this city in my tenure of being a councilman for 16 years, as well as being a precinct commitment for over 30. I've always been dedicated and committed to the city of Hammond and doing what's best. And certainly, seeing coyotes run through my neighborhood I'm not happy with. There are a number of issues I could speak on this evening, but certainly I want to applaud and thank you all for coming out and speaking in regards to the issues that affect in your community. So in saying that, let's give each other a round of applause. Certainly, the woods being taken away is not good, and we all know that. The housing industry throughout the city of Hammond, it's sad to say that as a kid growing up in the city of Hammond, you could buy a house for $60,000 or $70,000. Now they're almost $200,000. People can barely afford to live in Hammond. That breaks my heart. It's not about me, it's about us. Think about that. You all were elected to do a job and show your regards to the people that you represent. Fight for them and speak up. That's all I can say. I wish you all the best and be blessed.
I want to take a motion to adjourn. Motion's been made, is it seconded?
Seconded.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.